All right, I'm letting everybody know. Are you could hear us okay?
Yes, quite well, actually. Hi, Lillian. So Jeff, I saw one person come in. Are there others still holding?
Why are they coming?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Is it the manager?
There's more public.
Hello, Mr. Meyer. How are you?
Oh, this is all area.
Mayor Foley.
For you. All right, now we have everybody, we think.
Yep, there's no one in the waiting room now.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We are premiering our new technology at Village Hall, which allows us to be both live at Village Hall and broadcasting via Zoom, particularly useful when folks need to be away from others, keeping each other safe health-wise. So some of us are at home tonight. Some of us are at Village Hall. And it's the first time we're doing it as a group. It's pretty exciting. So if you, when you get to Village Hall, you can see there's a big screen so that whoever is in the room can see what's going on on a big screen. And it's great. We get to connect folks all across the village and beyond. So, um, if we'd have a roll call, please, clerk.
Mayor Foley.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Fatty.
Here.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Okay, welcome to our May monthly meeting. Second item is opportunity to request to vote to add or modify items on the agenda. I do have one modification, and I'll cover it in more detail when we get down under Highway. But the rate should be 20 an hour rather than 18 is on the agenda. But we'll go into detail on that. Anything else? Okay, moving into announcements. So the process for the meeting tonight, we'll hear all the reports of our departments, standing boards, municipal partners, and civic organizations. All of the meetings, all the reports are available in full on the website. So we're not going to read them all into the record. We'll pull the highlights out of each report, and then you're welcome to peruse them either online, or you can get copies from the Village Clerk. For the folks who are in Village Hall, there should be paper copies there for you. Garbage and yard waste will be picked up tomorrow morning. Again, they're going to be picked up in the same truck. The earliest appointment that I could make to visit the site is June 2nd to be, to have a demonstration for how they're separating our yard waste and garbage. But we will get to see that onsite, and I will come back with photographs. So you'll put all your bags, put all your yard waste bags out tonight. And if you have sticks, try to bundle them in two-foot lengths. We are going to have a short-term rental code workshop next Wednesday. And I wanted to put out a call for volunteers to serve on an advisory committee to review and comment on drafts. We're looking particularly for short-term rental operators and neighbors who might have opinions on the operation of short-term neighborhoods, excuse me, short-term rentals in their neighborhoods to give us some initial feedback. Sorry, I had the windows open. Some initial feedback on our next draft of the short-term rental law before we go to public hearing. So board members, we haven't talked about this. I'm thinking probably so that the board is functional, probably seven people tops. Does that sound like a reasonable number? Yes, well, Liz is there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so please, if you're interested in that, email thevillageclerk@vcsclerk@coldspringny.gov. Okay. Item four gives me no joy whatsoever. We are announcing the resignation of trustee Joe Curdo. And if I could ask the clerk to read trustee Curdo's letter into the record, please.
It's dated May 8th, and it's from Joe, and he addressed it to myself and copied the board. Dear colleagues, some may be aware the past three weeks have been particularly trying as I'm dealing with a significant health issue, which has made my presence in the village almost non-existent. Compound that with two months of prior unrelated health problems, and my almost entire board service today has been a bit unsettled. If you subscribe to the theory, listen to your body, the mind is sending an email in all caps saying, "It's time, Curdo." When I was asked by Kathleen to fill her vacancy, I raised my hand to help and told her I'd give it 110% until I couldn't. With that said, it's becoming difficult to perform my duties at the level you and I can and should expect. With a heavy heart, I submit my letter of resignation. In no way or form does this represent any concerns with the current board or our staff. Frankly, just the opposite. I've come to truly appreciate the village's staff. They are engaged, understand the culture of our village, and have heart. As a business owner, those are the characteristics we all strive for in our staff. Regarding my fellow board members, they are smart and highly engaged. Each comes at problem-solving in a different way. It takes time to gel, and it will. They are good public servants, and more importantly, good people. Being mayor of this village is not an easy task. Kathleen has done a great job in a short period of time with both and with multiple obstacles along the way. She has a vision, and I'm confident she'll get us all there with your help. Lastly, it's going to be important that everyone stays focused if this village is going to prosper. We need to concentrate more on the dams and less on the bathrooms, more on the budget as a whole and less on small line items. As well, with the huge impact of the Ford Trail coming, everyone needs to bring their A-game to these discussions. None of this is easy. It never is. The timing of this allows the person who fills my space to have an opportunity to grow. And if we, and if we elected in November to be part of a long-term solution, two-plus years out, respectively, and with a heavy heart, Joe Curdo.
Thank you, Jeff. When I spoke with Joe, I told him that his health is more important than anything. Everyone's health is more important than anything else. We've all been worried for Joe, and I'm glad he's tending to himself properly. And I hope his recovery is swift and complete, and he's back to himself ASAP, although maybe he could slow it down just a little bit so the rest of the world could keep up with him. He's a guy who moves. I've served the village in different capacities under four mayors and multiple iterations of trustees. And Joe Curdo is by far the hardest worker, the most practical, the most creative thinker, the most outcome-oriented, and the most joyful trustee that I've known. For years, I had hoped that Joe's many talents would come into the village sphere. And I feel so very lucky to have been able to serve alongside him. Thank you, Joe, for saying yes when I asked. And thank you for all you've done to give shape and vitality to this village board and to get our village back on track. We trustees, the staff, and the entire community are better for your service. We'll miss you, Joe. So no one can replace him, that's for sure. But that said, I'm appointing a pretty fantastic resident to complete his term. Laura Bazi is with us tonight. She's a Garden Street resident, and I know that she too will excel in trusteeship. So in contemplating possible candidates, I considered the work that we have ahead of us as a board and the skill sets that might be useful to round out the team. I also looked at our benches of standing boards for folks with experience in village decision-making. Laura is a ZBA member, as I said, and she rose to the top. Laura's training and background is in public policy and institutional analysis. She is the Director of Programs and Environmental Health Sciences at Yale. She has been deeply involved with Climate Smart Initiatives in Phillips Town and with the Phillips Town Trails Committee. Her work in climate change adaptation will be helpful as we plan capital projects to prepare the village for our future in an evolving climate. And she'll, she will bring, I know she will, bring her A-game to the Fuhrer Trail Project. As a ZBA member, Laura has also applied the zoning code, Chapter 34, since 2019. So she brings a really practical, user-driven perspective to the finalization of that critical code chapter. So Laura, welcome. Thank you for saying yes. You're welcome to join us for discussion this evening. But I think I would ask you to abstain from votes this evening until you're properly sworn in with the clerk and you're all brought up to speed. Would you like to say anything?
Thank, I, just to say thank you so much for the appointment. It's clearly very large shoes to step into. But I look forward to the work and learning all of the things that are necessary to support sport in the village. And, and also look forward to getting to know the trustees and the staff of the village that, that I don't know yet. And I'm ready, I'm ready to go.
Right on. Thanks, Laura.
Or just a bit of housekeeping. Your, so your trustee is effective as of now. You do need, you have 30 days to come in, and I'll swear you in, and you'll sign the big, both, big book of votes, and you'll be set to go.
Sounds good. I'll, I'll follow up with you about, about that. Jeff, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, well, this might be, we, I don't, the clerk would have to check records, but this might be the first time that we have an all-female Board of Trustees.
Yeah, I don't think I need to check the records on that.
Okay. Number five, which is the report of the accountant. So we're nearing the end of the, the village's fiscal year ends May 31st, and all municipalities go through this process near the end where we balance our books. We take lines that are over, overspent, and move into them lines that are underspent to balance out. So the package of the line adjustments that is before all of us details all of those moves, and we're being asked to approve all of them. Are there any questions from the trustees on those specific moves?
No.
Okay, so, um, let's see, Catherine, Catherine, are you comfortable with reading tonight? Are you coughing or able to read?
I can read some. Let's see how far I get.
Do that, you want to do the financial highlights and then make the motion?
Just attached our page.
Yeah, financial reports.
Attached, the highlights, financial highlights of May 11th, 2022. Attached are financial reports through May 5th, 2022. Usually, reports are done as of the last day of the previous month. But given the close proximity to the end of the year and large batch of vouchers transactions last week, I thought it would be helpful to show as of the end of last week. Also attached is a budget transfer resolution to make adjustments for expenses paid and to plan for some expenses that are anticipated to be paid. Another transfer resolution will be submitted after the close of this fiscal year in preparation for the AUD and audit. It takes several weeks slash months after May 31st to close out the books. New York State DOT funding has been finalized for the fiscal year 2023. Village of Cold Spring will be allocated $75,326.08 in total across CHIPS, PAVE, EWR programs. Budgeted estimate was close to the actual $21 more. The CFA consolidated funding application for various New York State grants opened just last week. Applications are due July 29th, 2022. I will start going through the funding categories at the village. And, at the village may be eligible for. 2022 Resources Available Guide in a PDF at ny.gov and submitted by our account.
Thank you. A couple of things, the, the chips money, sorry.
Didn't want to use the T-word. Treasurer.
The, our clerk is actually officially our, our legal treasurer under village law as a village resident. So two things, the chips, this is great that we got this much money in chips. We can combine it with the, I believe, the 22,000 that we have from before, which makes for a larger project. So that's a conversation that we need to have. We can get some real work done with that on streets and sidewalks. Plan it right. And also, in the next few weeks, Michelle generally goes through the, the CFA grants fairly quickly and lets us know what we can qualify for and what we can't. But it's a hustle always to meet that deadline. Last year, we were able, well, we made an application last year, but weren't successful. I'm hoping that maybe we can bring something our way this go-round.
Just as an FYI, this, the PDF that the government sends along is over 100 pages long, so.
Fun. So Jeff, I assume that we don't need to read all of these into the record? All of these lines?
Correct.
So how, how is this carried forward? Simply as Resolution 142022 authorizing budget adjustments?
Correct. So I need to make the motion. It needs to be second. You can read the first line, and then if you go to page three, the last line.
Okay, Catherine, why don't you go for it and finish out the, the item?
Resolution 142022 authorizing budget adjustments moved by me. By. Maybe one second.
Second.
Resolve that, one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring hereby approves the following budget adjustments for the year 2021 and 2022. And then, and two, the accountant, sorry, sliding. And two, the accountant is hereby authorized to transfer such funds immediately.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods.
Hi.
Trustee Bazi.
Hudson. Thank you.
And Mayor Foley.
Hi. We all sort of paused for a minute, went wet.
She's officially trustee, so she does have the opportunity.
Thank you.
So officially adopted on this date by a vote of four yes and one abstention.
Thank you, and thank you for Michelle, to Michelle for her excellent work. All right. We'll move to the report of the Highway Department. I see that, I thought I saw that Bugsy was with us. Just to pull out a few quick things, you'll see that there is new sidewalk laid on Academy Street. There are code, code, code compliance, there were, were code compliance issues with the bathrooms at Mayor's Park, and Bugsy worked with a plumber to get those fixed. And we now meet code for the separation of water and wastewater at Mayor's Park, which we were not doing prior, which is a little terrifying, but now we are. So thank you to Bugsy for, and, and Matt for getting right on that, Matt from wastewater. And I also wanted to make a note that we, we are aware of the flooding that's happening in the Nelsonville Woods every time we have a storm. It is partially debris. It's the woods. So debris is always going to pile and has to constantly be cleaned. Bugsy tries to have a look at it every week to see where we are. But the reality is that that drain, which is part of the Village of Cold Springs Stormwater System that is on Nelsonville property, is under-engineered for the storms that we are getting now and the amounts of water that are running down off the mountain. So even if there were no debris on that channel, it would still flood because it can't, it can't, the size of the pipe can't accept the flow of water that's coming down. So we should expect to see floods, and it is part of a larger engineering study that Bugsy and Matt and I are working with AKRF on to try to get a strategy. All of that connects down at Fair Street and Northern Avenue, on Northern Avenue and Fair Street, and they're all linked together. So it's a very complicated puzzle, and it needs to be worked on as a whole. So we'll be coming back to you with more information on that. So anyway, you don't need to, you don't need to email us that it's flooded. We know. Bugsy, is there anything that you would like to add? I think that's him. Okay, hearing nothing.
Yeah, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your good work this week.
Thank you.
He's also down a guy. So poured that sidewalk with, with two. Thank you very much. We did budget in the new year for a part-time highway crew member. We have a candidate who actually approached both me and Bugsy over the winter. His name is Chris Barnett. He lives here in the village, and he's very eager to get his foot in the door. And when the part-time job was created in the new budget year, he put himself forward and is eager to work. Bugsy says in his letter of recommendation that Chris has shown great diligence trying to get a job with us. When we were installing a new manhole monitor at the LME, he watched us perform the task, asked many questions about installation, and I think he would be an asset to our apartment, to our department. And we did set the, remember that everyone in Highway is moving up as part of the new budget. So the entry level now lands at 50, sorry, at 20. There is, it says 18 in the recommendation and on the agenda. But I would put forward that we hire him at the, the budgeted rate of 20 an hour. Someone like a second?
Second.
Thank you, Catherine, all in favor? Hey. Excellent, get him in there, Bugs.
My favorite thing, take initiative.
He's, he's really great. Make sure you say hello. Okay, water and wastewater. We have a resolution before us and a couple of notes. First, I want to thank Matt and his team for hosting the Nelsonville Fish and Fur Clubs Fishing Derby last weekend. Looked like it was good turnout. Thank you for helping out with that. The new second operator for wet water and wastewater has been advertised. Resumes have been received. Matt is reviewing them and setting appointments for interviews. We are moving forward on continuing to get estimates for ventilation and enclosing the building at water and wastewater. It's much, it's much more complicated than initially seemed. We need proper ventilation. And then the resolution that's before us tonight regards the repair of the auger. Matt, is there anything that you would like to add since you're on?
No, I mean, the both proposals that we received are very close in price. Then, yeah, just looking forward to getting the equipment back on there. But yeah, you summed up everything else quite nicely.
Okay, thank you. So this, if you remember back in, it counts two months ago already, back in March, we looked at labor and equipment separately. We needed to, Matt, you can explain better why we needed to go through a second round?
Oh, just to make sure that both of the proposals were apples-to-apples, so to say. So we were getting the same duration total quote as opposed to a day-by-day rate as they were originally presented.
Tweeps, would you like to make the motion related?
I'm looking for the, the, okay, here we go. Yes, I will make the motion. Here we go. Resolution 15-2022, accepting bid of Allian Industries, Alon Industries. The following resolution was offered by Tweeps Woods for adoption and seconded by.
Second.
Excellent. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring wastewater treatment plant needs to have an auger and cutter box repaired. And whereas on March 23rd, 2022, the Village Board of Trustees approved the purchase of the materials and determined that the cost for labor should be bid out separately. And whereas quotes for the labor were sought and two were submitted with, with Alon Industries submitting the lowest bid, therefore, it is thereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the labor of the auger and the cutter box replacement and repairs to Alon Industries at the cost of $12,627. And, yep.
Trustee Fatty.
Yes.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods.
Hi.
Trustee Bazi.
Hudson.
And Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Hereby adopted today by a vote of four. Yes, one abstention.
Um, can I just ask a question on this? For future, can we, actually, I'm not specifically to the auger or the box cutter because I wouldn't know an auger or a box cutter if it walked into my room. But I wanted to know if we can do the, write out the numbers for future resolutions when they involve monies? I think that's actually very helpful. That's the first time I was actually able to read it without stumbling over the numbers. Is that something that we can do?
On resolutions, they typically are.
Oh, okay. Well, this is lovely because this, I feel like the first time I've seen this.
Where I might have died one, but as a rule of thumb, they typically are.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you very much. I'm sure I will get on top of this momentarily, actually. I'll send out the email and get on top of this.
Right on. So trust Curdo, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm sorry. We had advertised a position for the dual-licensed operator, and the deadline was yesterday. It was the cutoff, and we received three. We did receive a fourth application today. And it's after the deadline we had posted. So it's really a board decision if we want to accept that for back to take into consideration with the others or not.[1505.37]
Was there an indication for why it was late?
I believe it was due to busy work schedule, being sick currently and, you know, everyday life. But yeah, that was the explanation that was given to me in the middle of the resume.
Thoughts, trustees?
I say the more the merrier.
Agreed.
I agree. With everybody getting sick, it's hard to get things done. Everybody gets a little backed up.
I am, I am feeling a little less tolerant about timeliness on a job application, but I trust Matt to ask good questions and identify the best candidate.
I agree, and the more the merrier. So I will over the side of caution and review it. And yeah, as soon as they're all reviewed, we'll set up the interviews and go from there.
Thank you. Joe, what is always giving you a hard time about language? And it's too bad he didn't stay around just for this resolution to hear muffing monster grinder in the.
Oh, he was a big part of moving it forward, so.
Right on. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. Report of the Building Department. Of course, we are continuing in partnership in an intermunicipal agreement with the town, the town's code enforcement officer, Greg Warner, and the new fire inspector, Greg, what is the, or excuse me, Bob, what is the new inspector's name?
Um, I can't think of his name off the top of my head right now. He, he hasn't started yet. I was surprised. Like, I've, I've, I called Greg this morning as well, wondering where he, where he has been and he hasn't started yet. So Greg was supposed to follow for the day.
Okay.
I can't think of his name off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Well, we hope we'll, we hope we'll see him soon. So Greg did put forward just a couple of notes. He is working out a, one of the, one of the concerns that has been raised previously is the level of detail for compliance for projects in the historic district. And Greg is working on a process to have the, the property owner report back on the install of windows showing compliance with certificate of appropriateness. I'm sure that he'll have conversations with the HDRB on that. But that's really helpful to have a check at that stop along the way. He says, we're operating as expected. Don't anticipate any problems. He's got a weekly meeting going with Jeff. And he also has some ideas to simplify compliance around short-term rental, both under our existing code and as we go forward and consider modifications. So I'm, I'm happy to have his brain contributing to that process. Jeff, how's it all? And do you have any comment on the process from your end?
Nope.
Okay, Catherine, do you have a question?
I do. If we're going to have a meeting next week, would it be appropriate to ask him to join if he has ideas?
Sure. Will you extend the invitation, clerk? Please. Thank you. Good thinking. And we can also provide him with, with the draft after we make some. No, he should have it, he should have it beforehand. We can share the draft with him as well. Okay. Reported the Police Department. It's a pretty standard and quiet month. In the village, a couple of things that the officer in charge asked me to pull out is that he is. So, so the format in which he reports his monthly data is the format he inherited from the previous officer in charge. He just continued using the format. He is working with the Ad-Hoc Committee on Community Policing to sort of redesign data presentation in a way that's more user-friendly and accessible for the reader. And he is also wanting folks to know that he is, he and his officers are mindful of and monitoring the traffic that's being rerouted from Route Nine out by Happy Liquor and I think it's Countryside Motel. The bridge is being replaced. And the first few days of traffic moving over that bridge, it's down to a single lane where mostly a disaster. But the town supervisor and the sheriff and DOT and the contractor on site have been working and making adjustments with timing of lights and sheriff's deputies on, on hand to help with traffic flow. And it seems to have improved. We are aware that some traffic is rerouting down Route Nine. And Larry and the sheriff will continue to have conversations with DOT. I believe, Bob, you might be able to confirm this. There will be about a two-month period that we have a single lane of traffic and then hope to return to double lane over that bridge.
Yeah, I was told it would be closer to three months, but that's what we were told, two to three months period. And then after that point, we should have both lanes open again.
The, the changing of the timing on the lights seems to have relieved congestion quite a bit.
Yeah, I guess, yes, I was, I met the supervisor, been tasked up to, we had a meeting. As you know, the first day was a total disaster. We had back, traffic backed up all the way to peak scale. Anyway, we met the very next day. We had a discussion, make adjustments on the light. And I guess, you know, those lights or sensors, they can see if traffic's coming, if traffic's waiting, so they're adjusting stuff like that. They also, we did, second day, they did have the sheriffs there and they did route traffic through Old Mobbing Close Road. But things definitely have improved over the last several, last week or so. And hopefully, right now, it seems to be pretty tolerable from what I can tell. Each time I've been going through here, it's been reasonable all week time.
Good stuff. Thanks. And the next item is the report of the fire company. Eliza, do you want to take this one? Now we'll test out how the microphones do with masks.
So there were five activated fire alarms, three EMS assists, five calls total for April, three empty rescues, one transformer fire, one brush fire, one mutual aid to North Highlands for motor vehicle accident and one mutual aid to North Highlands for an outdoor smoke investigation.
And there are some for folks viewing at home on the website, there are some statistics about grilling and fire safety that you could avail yourselves of. We were also pretty lucky on that brush file, fire, that it was caught and it wells. Everything is so dry. So thank you for fast response on that. Okay, thanks. Justice Court chugs along, four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars collected in penalties, fees, tickets, surcharges, and twenty defendants handled in the last month. Okay, I'm going to put Historic District Review Board and Zoning Board together because they both covered the substantive element in their reports was the same, and that is that they are working together. I'll read from, from Chair Worth's statement. I initiated a discussion with the HDRB about procedures that apply when code enforcement officers refer a project to more than one board, ZBA, HDRB planning. And he's asking questions about how applicants get moved through multiple boards. My comment to both of those boards is that I'm pleased to see them having this conversation and that they're talking to each other about applications. The order of review, having sat in their chairs, and Laura knows this as well, the order of review kind of needs to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Every, every project is a little bit different. So it's hard to have a hard and fast rule about go to ZBA first or HDRB first. And particularly, obviously, in the, in the historic district. So I want our boards and our applicants to be using their time wisely, ensuring and ensuring that both of them, all of them, our planning board too, are optimizing the process to get, to meet the goals of each of the boards per view. They all have a slightly different purview. We all have to move forward together in service to the applicant. So, good stuff. Okay, went over planning board, so come back to planning board. So the planning boards report this month consisted of questions that the chair formulated relating to the fjord trail. Let's get it in front of me here. And we're not going to spend time on it tonight because we have an upcoming meeting on May twenty-fifth via Zoom. We had originally scheduled the, the meeting for the firehouse, but with limits of forty. We think it's important that we open it up on Zoom so that more people can participate and that we have a good recording and a good public record that folks can watch from there, from, from online. So, May twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, Jack, we will carry your questions forward. I believe they have been delivered to the, to the fjord trail folks, and we look forward to the public conversation on May twenty-fifth. Okay, Rec Commission, I'm going to deal with the events that need to be approved first and then ask Eliza to give a little summary of a conversation that, that she and I had with the Rec Commission Chair. Is it only yesterday? It feels like a year ago. So we have two weddings put forward at the bandstand. Oh, I skipped a tree, but we'll come back to them. There are two applications for weddings. One, Sunday, June twelfth, at five thirty, they've requested four thirty to six thirty for breakup and, sorry, setup and breakdown. Estimated attendance of forty, no amplified sound. Any concerns about this event from trustees? Nope.
Are they just having the service in the bandstand or?
Yes, as far as I'm aware. Jeff?
That's what it looks like.
And they have, they have met with, the Rec Commission has already met with the applicant and vetted us to this point. So my assumption is when it lands on our box that they've met, they've checked most of the boxes already, including insurance.
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion on the June twelfth wedding?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, and Trustee Bazi abstains. The second is looking farther ahead into October from eleven to two. It is also a wedding. There is amplified sound proposed for this event for one hour on portable speakers. The applicant, Jeff, Jeff, I don't know whose handwriting this is on the note. Also discussed with the applicant that she has advised C Street could be docking at that time.
That is hand, handwriting.
Okay. So it is midday on a, October eighth is a Saturday or a Sunday? Any comments or thoughts? October, no, sorry, October eighth is a Friday, actually. Oh, that's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Hang on a second. Saturday.
She'll have more guests than she anticipated if the C Street comes in.
All too true. And the boats, we, we don't have, I'll come back to this when we, when we get to Chamber. We don't have a finalized schedule for C Street yet, but they normally come in earlier, I believe. Does anyone have any concerns about this wedding on the eighth?
No.
Okay, a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the wedding application for October eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, and Trustee Bazo stands. We, oh, Jeff, the other question I have is this one, the eighth is marked received but not paid. Has the fee been paid?
I'll have to check with that.
Okay, so can, can we, how can we conditionally say yes to this until we're sure that it's been paid?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just noticed that one is stamped paid and one is stamped received. It may just be a clerical error. Okay, best to the, best to the marrying couples. So, um, on REC, REC has been focusing on improving signage at Mayor's Park and in thinking about considering new uses at Mayor's Park primarily. And we expanded the conversation a bit yesterday to talk about village parks as a sort of a, a combined entity where we can accomplish different goals on different sites. And Eliza, I'll turn it over to you to give a little summary.
Yeah, so the Rec Commission is working on sort of consolidating the signage. They want to make it generally, I think, I think the goal is to make signage more friendly and more welcoming to our community and to make all of our parks more functional for our community members. I think everybody was kind of in agreement that ultimately we want our parks to serve our residents and our community's needs. And there was a discussion of finding ways to diversify the offerings within the parks so that ultimately we could create a park, you know, look at the park as a, all the parks together and look at all the offerings we have and make sure that there are more than just one or two covered. But if people have interest in, you know, we have lots of dogs in the park, in, in the community. So the idea of putting a dog run somewhere or creating more opportunities for teens or younger, like middle-aged kids, not middle-aged, but older than five and under eighteen. So, so there are different areas that, that we were kind of looking at that can be added on to. And we really discussed looking at all the parks sort of as a group and mapping out a plan that would sort of designate what is being used right now and what we want to preserve. And then what are the spaces that are free that have opportunities? And what are the ideas that have come through the Rec Committee? They, they had a survey recently on, on different sports and athletic activities, but also some of the other ideas that have come in, like skate park. So we're going to be working together to sort of try and develop a more comprehensive plan for our parks across the board.
And obviously, that'll be a public process. And there'll be lots of opportunity for public conversation around that. And an update for trustees, like, I don't remember if this got communicated out to everyone yet. The DCI class from Haldane that wishes to carry forward the skate, skate park proposal needed to reschedule. Jeff, they asked to come in on the first of June, right?
Correct. Yeah, the first, the second, whatever the Wednesday is.
The first, okay. Thank you. Any questions for Eliza? Okay, good stuff. We are back to Phillips Town. We've already got a lot of Phillips Town news, but Bob, what else have you got for us?
Okay, I attended the meeting at the Highway Department today for the new garage. We definitely got a date now of our material coming on, on May twenty-fifth. Hope that's going to stay as it is. We approved a change order. E-waste collection, we're going to be starting that up in, in probably June. Everything's all set to go. Got the garage cleaned out, got skids, and we're all set to go. So we'll probably be seeing a e-blast from terror regarding that and what things we can accept, such as computers, laptops, and so forth like that. I don't know if Karen Earl spoke to you at all yet, but I know she was trying to get on the agenda somewhere on your, on the village. Anyway, anyway, food scraps, we're definitely moving forward with this. We, we, people are going to start being registered next week. We're looking at about two hundred people to do this to start with. It's going to be a six-month pilot program and see how it goes and hopefully it works out pretty good. It's amazing after you start getting involved with this, how much food scraps is part of your waste every day in your home, at your house. You know, me being involved with this and going home and cleaning out the, cleaning up after dinner every night. It's amazing how much food scraps really is, is probably over fifty percent of your garbage. But hopefully, this is going to be a good program for everybody. We drilled another well at Garrison on four oh three. Unfortunately, that did not yield much water. So we're looking at other things at this particular time. It's in the hands of Ron Gainer right now, our engineer. And we're looking at some other options, but I really can't discuss them at this particular time. Not that it's private or anything, we just don't really have, we have plans in place, but we got to see what comes out of them. Also, we purchased some new equipment for the Highway Department, a caboter excavator, a curver, a curb machine. We use to make curbs with laptop and so forth like that. So our old machine is kind of broken. So we're going to get a new one. And we also get a, buy a new computer diagnostic tool, which is going to be used for the trucks and all the machinery we currently have. We passed a resolution to hang a progressive pride flag down. Sean was at our meeting last week and we'll get that going. So I told him we got three by five flag. The planning board is continuing to be very busy with the, with the Shakespeare's Festival. Not, yes, Shakespeare, and Garrison Golf Club. Just want to let everybody know that we had over nine hours of public hearing and it only was nine-hour public hearing. There's a mistake in my report, I'm sorry. But with, with that public hearing, the applicant definitely took this to heart. They're reducing, they're going to reduce their scope of work, which is going to do right now, it's a particular time to remove the indoor theater, which is like two hundred and twenty-five seats, and they're also removing the twenty-room hotel. So as you know, people's public hearing does, people do take effect to that. And I just want to keep everybody aware of public hearings are very important. So people, applicants can get their input from the public. And they do, in most cases, they do make some changes. So, thank you.
Thanks. That's how the, the process works. Bugsy, we take note that the town has acquired a curver. Essentially, we can borrow. And, and speaking of, of borrowing, I know that your board did take up at your last workshop, a conversation about the possibility of intermunicipal agreement to share gas pumps. We have our gas and diesel at the waterfront in very old and slightly scary, if we're honest, facilities. And we're concerned about their potential impact that close to the river. The town, as I understand, Bob, you agreed to a six-month trial.
Yeah.
For our, for our, thank you very much for our fire company, police department, water and sewer, highway, any other vehicles. I think those are all the vehicles. So we're, Michelle is working with Maureen Etta, who's the clerk in Highway there to help us sort out fobs, et cetera. And they're exchanging information on tract uses so that they can try to anticipate ordering. But ideally, we could, this is another place where we can create efficiencies.
Yeah, especially environmental things like, such as gasoline and petroleum and things like that, as you know.
And we need to use down what's in the tanks right now. So we've got some time to, we've got some time to make the details work. So thank you, Town of Phillips Town again. And I'm loving, I'm loving the mutilate.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Bob, on the food scrap recycling. Is this only going to be for households in your pilot program?
Yes, it is. You know, we talked about restaurants and so forth like that. And that's particular time, we thought it would be a little bit too much for us to get involved with the restaurant. Because I'm sure you have, I don't know how, you know, you know better, you run a restaurant. I don't know, you do your scraps every single day. Right now, we're only collecting the scraps once a week. So I don't know if that would work for the restaurant business or not. But it's something definitely, if we move forward after this pilot, it's something we can definitely look into incorporating restaurants as well.
I know at one point, Glenwood wanted to collect food scraps from restaurants. I don't think it got where, where they wanted it to get, but it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it is. I think it's going to be a pretty good thing for the environment. You know, reduce our carbon footprint quite a bit. Again, once, well, you know, in the restaurant business, but just being home, the amount of food waste scraps that you come up with, it's amazing to be quite.
I have four of the largest cans that Royal has. And I mean, I'm not using paper plates or paper cups. All my dishware gets washed. So anything that's in the garbage is pretty much food waste.
Yeah. Royal just takes that as is today?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We looked at Royal as one of our, tried to partner with them to collect food scraps. And they were, didn't seem like they were really into it this particular time. But it would be, would make sense for the new specialists to pick up the garbage here in the village, you know.
You'll be composting it? I mean, after your, that's the goal.
We have a company that's going to go and pick our food scraps up every, every week. And they bring it to a facility and they make compost out of it. And so it depends on what you do. I think we're allowed maybe once a year, we can go get a couple, a truck full or something like that and bring it back to the town and so forth like that. So again, it's a pilot program. We're just, a lot of unanswered questions at this particular time. But I think it's a good thing to get started with.
So Bob, how do villagers who would like to participate in this pilot do that?
Yeah, anybody can participate, village, anybody, any resident of Phillips Town can participate. I believe next Saturday is registration. You just go up to the town hall, get your register, you'll get a voucher. And then you'll get, that voucher will give you two, give you a few things. It's going to give you a countertop food scrap container. And that countertop has a bag in it and so forth like that. When that bag is. When that bag is filled, you have, gonna have a larger, I think it's about a four-gallon food scrap container. And at the end of the week, everything goes in that. And then on Saturdays, you would bring that to the landfill. That's the way it's gonna work, not the landfill, our recycling center at that particular time. And we'll store it in basically the same-sized garbage cans you have here that the village has. Will contain that, those food scraps. And then I think it's Tuesdays, the company's gonna come and pick them up. So, yeah, anybody.
You just killed it, Bob. You said, you said garbage bins the same size as the bins in the village. You just killed it.
Anyway, so that's the plan.
So, so people are dropping off, people are dropping off their own for now, and the, the plan is to try it out and then hopefully.
Yeah, if everything works out, you know, we get a lot of volunteers, maybe we can find people like on each street. For example, if someone picks them up on a Saturday morning, instead of two hundred people going to the recycling center, drop their own off. Maybe they can do, we can have a, a spot in the village once a week to pick it up. As opposed to have everyone running up to the, with the recycling center. Because that's a lot of people to go up there every single week on Saturdays. And also, that, that's more gasoline is being burnt and being going in the atmosphere as well.
It fits the purpose.
Yeah, exactly. But I'm saying, it's a start in, you know, the plan is to hopefully improve things, the process as we move forward.
So.
I believe it's, I think it's starting next week. You can just go up to the town hall, like you said, get the, then I think it's the twenty, things, the twenty or twenty-first. Will be the day that people can actually pick up their, the cans.
So Bob, if you could ask the clerk, your clerk, to share with our clerk postings, et cetera, we can share it out on our website and on social media. Thank you. And, and both trustee Bosse and trustee Starbuck have been very involved with Climate Smart Phillips Town. So I have not yet, Karen, Karen Erdl and I have passed each other multiple times and not been able to have a direct conversation. So maybe the two of you can work with her to sort out how the village folds into this, in, in this trial. That's good.
Can I say something quick?
Who is that, Bugsy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just, you say you're waiting for the tanks to run down? We're on automatic delivery, so they're not gonna run down until you tell me to stop.
That was my next question for you tomorrow, is when do we shut off auto delivery? So there, I'm asking you now. I'm, thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'll check when I got last deliveries. I think my last delivery for gas was probably four days ago. And I think diesel was about a week ago.
Okay, so we have to make sure we have everything else in place before you stop deliveries, so let's make sure we're talking to each other.
Sounds great.
Awesome. Thanks, Bugs.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Trees.
Yes, we skip trees. So I'm gonna refer everyone to the very eloquently written report of the tree board for more detail. Their report is titled "Confronting a Very Pretty Problem" this month. That committee is full of super innovative and really smart people doing super cool things. The calorie pears that are all around the village, they're the trees that have white flowers. And they, the flowers drop and they're very sticky and they're smelly. They're beautiful, but they're problematic in lots of ways. And one of the ways is that they're very weak. And calorie pears were planted by a lot of municipalities as fill-in trees along streets. And are now getting to the age where they're, they are becoming maintenance problems. And the tree advisory board is participating in a program to graft, to try grafting calorie pears with other cultivars. To try to sort of, I guess, breed out some of the weaknesses of the calorie pear. So that's happening on your streets in the village. That's pretty cool. And they also did plant this week an American elm, I'm sorry, last week on Arbor Day. It's a disease-resistant American elm called New Harmony. It is in front of the Methodist Church on the upslope side of the yard, the northeast corner. There used to be a big giant shade tree there that came down in a storm. A calorie pear was planted in its place. The calorie pear is damaged. It will come down eventually. And this elm tree will rise in its place to fill that space again. So that's very exciting.
And I just say, I hated those pears. I hate to hate them from, from day one.
Everybody does. The challenge, the challenge that that board faces is to take them all down at once with leave, there's so many of them in the village.
Twenty-one, I think it says.
And to take them all down at once would have a really big impact, so we're.
I'll pay to get the ones in front of my place out. Those, those little petals, they're all over my dining room.
And they stink.
They, they, they blow it, oh my God. Horrible. Every shop owner on, on Main Street has to sweep them out.
Part of the legislator, legislator Montgomery isn't available tonight. I know that she was on a personnel call last night. And that committee was looking particularly at hiring in the sheriff's department. And I know she has asked to see, to have made available to at least the legislators. I don't think it could be made available completely to the public, but at least to the legislators, the sort of organizational analysis that was done of the sheriff's department under contract last year. That's all that I have from her. Anyone else hear anything from Nancy? So Chamber, Civic Partner, the Chamber. Congratulations on, hi Jeff, congratulations, Cold Spring and Bloom was super fun. I loved the interactive stuff. It was really fun to see people of all ages doing the scavenger hunt and reading about the buildings. Super great. You have asked for a meeting regarding Cold Spring a Glow, which you've scheduled for the ninth. We'd be happy to do that. You can schedule it with a clerk. And you've asked to about C-streak. So I went back and looked at the last communication with C-streak. They were, at that point, let's see, I printed it. They were proposing Thursdays in the summer and then weekends in the fall. But they were waiting to get some information from West, West Point over docking. So they would like to, again, dock across the river on some days and in the village and others. So I did email them this afternoon and ask for an update. And hopefully we'll have it soon because they were talking about starting mid-June if they were to go ahead with summer Thursdays. So, on that. I miss, I miss any other important?
Just a couple of things to highlight. But first, I actually wanted to say, you know, although I'm sorry to hear about the reason for it and wish Joe Curdo the best. I want to congratulate the board on making an excellent choice in appointing Laura Bosse as the new trustee, and congratulations, Laura. Yeah, just a couple of other things. So in addition to your glow coming up in December, our next Chamber breakfast meeting is June fourteenth. As always, local officials and the public are welcome to join those meetings. This one is gonna be at Magagino Art Gallery. And we'll be giving out our annual Chamber Awards, as well as the Baumgarten Scholarship that we give out once a year. And just to put something on the radar for any business owners who might be interested in joining this. We're unsure on the date still, but in the next few weeks, we are hoping to get scheduled a, an event partnering with the Phillips Town Fights Dirty Group. Basically a workshop on how business owners can reduce their carbon footprint. Catherine, you had a, a great idea along those lines. Let's get all of that, all those food scraps from our restaurants. Composted. So I'll, I'll let you guys know about that and we'll, of course, be promoting it through the Chamber. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, getting back to the food scraps, if the restaurant wants to bring the food scraps up to the, on Saturday mornings, they're more than welcome to.
That would be very ugly.
I'm just saying, you know, just saying, if you wanna bring them, or something, you're more than welcome to.
Think you need a pickup.
Makes a difference with the amount of scraps you have.
All you need is one hole in the bag. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Okay, next is reports of mayor and the Board of Trustees. Tweeps, I attended NICOM last week. Have lots of good stuff to share. I thought Tweeps, maybe you could give us a little insight on the session, that very useful session you went to about state budget and state, state funding to municipalities. Muted.
Sure. Yes, we attended NICOM last week. It was actually very interesting. I don't, this is our first time, so I don't know what attendance is normally like. But it looks like the attendance was quite large this year from municipalities all over the state. Mayors and trustees and other elected officials. They did a, a session on where the budget was as of last week. And just kind of give us an opportunity to ask questions about some of the, the big issues that were addressed or not addressed in the, in the budget, the upcoming budget. And I learned, I learned a lot. And I learned that a lot of the issues and questions that we have as a, as a village are not, we are not unique. A lot of villages suffer from the same issues with grants, with getting the money. You know, you apply for a grant, you get, you, you win the, the grant. And then it takes years upon years to actually receive the funds. Or the grant process is just very arduous. And for small villages like ours, with very small staffs, requiring and asking for the amount of paperwork and information just becomes burdensome. And, and a lot of times, money goes unused because villages like ours don't have the opportunity to, to apply for those grants. So that was kind of both heartening and sort of heartbreaking, I guess. Because, you know, there's money out there that, that we could be getting. But it just takes just huge staffs to actually, to apply for those monies. Trying to think of what else, other highlights. Well, there were a lot. And I suppose we could make some of this information accessible on our website if we wanted. In terms of the presentations and stuff, they were, they're very lengthy, very detailed. And, and I think probably only Michelle would truly understand all the things that, that were said and discussed. But, but it was very, it was helpful to hear kind of the highlights of the, of the current budget. And we will, we, I think we made some good connections and hopefully we will attend it next year as well.
More of us, great. There were also, I heard a very interesting presentation on the, a model of government called manager council. Which normally is used at various levels of various sizes of municipal government. But what, one of the speakers in that group is from a company that, from a, from a research group that looks at optimizing organizational structures. And I think that that might be a useful, a useful tool for us in the village to think about how we, how we do structure operations going forward. Okay, anything from Catherine as an update?
Just been sort of working behind the scenes on the, on the rollout of, you know, the parking. Waiting to get our agenda kind of thing.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm getting myself back up to speed after Jazz Fest.
It's been a week. Eliza, anything from you in addition to the rec commission?
Well, I've, we've been talking about weed management in the parks.
Oh, yes.
You brought up the concern that our current weed management regimen is more toxic than we would like. So I reached out to, I, I first reached out to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust to get some insight into how they manage weeds in large pieces of property. And they recommended we reach out to the New York, New Jersey Trails Committee. And there's a huge sort of network of volunteer organizations that are working to eradicate invasive species in New York State. So the next step, I'll be reaching out to them and seeing if I can get, either working with our village tree boards, master gardeners, or one of the volunteers to these organizations to look at the properties where we're doing spray for weed management. And then see if they can advise us or provide us with some, some suggestions on how to do it in a less toxic manner. So, so that was one. And then the other, as all the trustees know, I submitted the first draft of the short-term rental code updates for review. But we'll be talking about that in a week or so.
Excellent. I was, I have to say frankly horrified when the renewal for the contract for weed management in our parks came to my desk and I looked at the, at the list of ingredients and Roundup was right near the top. Both along the river and at the Tots Park. So we're pulling back from that clearly. We shouldn't be using it anywhere, and especially anywhere where children are playing. So I appreciate Eliza taking the initiative. I know that, you know, traditionally, things like Roundup have been used because they do kill the weeds, but they kill lots of other things too. So we need to find a more sustainable option for our parks and especially our parks where our kids are playing in the grass. Thank you. I have a couple of things. I mentioned earlier that Bugsy and I have been, and Matt also, because there are, wait, there are water issues as well, are continuing to work with AKRF to, to sort out a scope, a project scope and a, and a potential cost for engineering resolution for the failed storm drains on Northern and Fair. I'm hoping to hear back from them soon and be able to share them out with the trustees. We did put out the, the RFP for the engineer. We didn't get much response. But one of the companies was actually one of the ones that Matt and Water and Wastewater had recommended we look at. Put in a really excellent response. And I need to share that out with all of you, and I'd like to have them give a presentation to us. Potentially, or potential for, you know, a long-term relationship. We might, we might consider trying them out for a project and see how it goes. So I'll send that to you soon. The Wood Main Street Wall is going to be mortared beginning, I think they're starting early next week. Donald McDonald, I were on site with the contractor, testing mortar samples for color and depth. It's important. We've put so much money and energy into making that, that beautiful stone-laid wall look like an historic wall. It's super important that we get the mortar right in terms of color and depth. And I think we've, I think we've hit a sweet spot. Sean Conway from HTRB also came out and had a look. So you'll see folks working there. Again, it will start out quite dark. And it might be shockingly dark, but then it will lighten as it dries. I think it's gonna look good. There's about a ten-foot patch that, where they're experimenting right now. So tomorrow, we are baptizing trustee Bosse by fire. And she and I are meeting with the DOT related to complete streets, possibilities for funding a study and the possibility of continuing complete streets along the ninety corridor beyond the Fjord Trail Project. So we're looking forward to that. I'm also meeting at twelve-thirty with Parks, the town supervisor and legislator Montgomery and legislator Scoofus related to staffing for the mountain, particularly relating to first response. So hopefully we can move the needle on that a little bit. And I think that's everything for me. Anything else? We have a couple of other business items left. First, in item twenty-one is, this is an existing contract for IT service and maintenance contracts. Managed technology, the police department has a separate contract for eight stations, including the cars and the, and the CCTV. We're simply renewing for another year. It's the same company that got us our setup tonight, helped us with our setup tonight. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the renewal for our service and maintenance contracts with managed technologies for the police department.
Second?
Second.
Tweeps, all in favor? Tweets, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And abstention from.
There's two contracts or is that motion for both contracts?
Are there two?
Renewal service and maintenance contracts.
Oh, I see. I didn't read in this two separate contracts.
Yes.
We did not specify. So would you like it moved again for each?
Or move to include both, so.
Okay, Catherine is the, as the, the mover, would you like to modify?
Um, authorize the mayor to sign both.
There we go.
Renewal service and maintenance contract.
Is that an acceptable modification to the seconder?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Bye.
Hi, okay. Um, okay, so, uh, we have, uh, an appointment to, I would like to make the motion to. Appoint Karen Jackson to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Police Reform to help take them over the finish line, um, for their initial. Um, assignment to review the community survey and, um, the police policies that are ready for review at this time. Um, Karen participated in all of the public meetings related to, um, the executive order in spring of twenty twenty. Um, she made really smart inquiries about the internal validity of our survey to ensure that we were not priming biases. Um, in any of our questions. And she also volunteered going door-to-door carrying information on the survey and also delivering paper surveys to those. Who didn't have access to the electronic survey. Um, uh, she is unanimously supported by all members of that committee. Um, to help them finish this first piece of work. That is my motion to appoint Karen.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, thank you, Eliza and Laura abstains. Okay, last is approval of minutes. We have three outstanding. Um, the sixteenth of March, the twenty-third of March and the thirteenth of April. I caught one thing right before the meeting started, Jeff. Um, on March sixteenth.
Okay.
First item, presentation by River Rose. Um, in the paragraph beginning Kay Foley, it still says Peter there, K, K Foley, thank. It should be thank the owner's representative since we don't know Peter's last name.
Catherine, do you know his last name?
Um. No, that, that person, no. I only know the, um. The, uh, owners, but that's not the same last name.
Representative will work on it?
Okay.
So with that modification, may I have a motion on the March sixth minutes? Or does anyone else have any discussion on the minutes first?
Oh, we have an issue here.
What?
And that. Eliza.
Oh, we don't have quorum for this one right now. You're right, we have to, we have to table it again.
Well, we have to table it indefinitely because.
You're never gonna have.
We're never gonna have a quad three.
Of course, we're never gonna have the three people who are here. So how does this? Okay, but for now we'll table March sixteenth. Thank you for catching that, Jeff. Jeff, I didn't catch it. Any comments or questions on March twenty-third?
I wasn't here for March twenty-third either.
But Starbuck, trustee Starbuck, trustee Fatty and I were, so that's three. Any comments?
Um, motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March twenty-third, twenty-two.
Second? All in favor? And two abstentions. Okay, and the last is April thirteenth. Uh, it looks as if all of the edits were incorporated. Were there any other outstanding issues? Are we good now? Okay, then I will move to approve the minutes of April thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And one abstention. Okay, that's the end of us talking. Would, would the public like to talk? Is there anything the public would like to raise? Or the press? Gueston?
I'll cast all.
And yes, hello. Um, I hadn't planned to talk, but I wanted to jump in, uh, first to, um. Thank for the leadership for, uh, finding a safer method for weeding, uh, in the waterfront and clearly the, the Tots Park. Uh, so thank you for that. And then my comment is about the Sea Streak. Uh, last September, um. We hosted a forum down in the lower village with then candidates Foley Woods and Starbucks. And part of, uh, the conversation revolved about, you know, us requesting a greater commitment through transparency. And to negotiating with Sea Streak in ways that recognize that this is a neighborhood. Uh, we all understand the importance of public access to the waterfront. Um, but there are families that live here, their residents who live here, who are valuable as residents and families in other parts of the village. And so I want to just ask you to please remain committed to having greater transparency. Uh, negotiating with Sea Streak, including, you know, having public hearings before the contract. And recognizing the needs of those residents who sort of bear the brunt of the quality of life issues that. Sea Streak brings, uh, when they use our dock in order for them to make profits. Uh, so I just wanted to ask for, uh, for you to remain committed to greater transparency and, you know, recognizing those people here. Uh, who are residents, um, and whose quality of life really suffers. When we have that many people come on and off those boats, uh, all at the same time, or when the boats linger here. Uh, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gueston, and we are absolutely still committed to that. Uh, we need a solid proposal from, right now we don't have anything. Um, solid to respond to. So when Sea Streak does put something forward, we can certainly have conversations about it.
Great. I was, I was just alarmed by the June date.
That was put forward as a, that was put forward as a, we're thinking about June.
Okay, great.
They haven't committed to that yet.
Okay, great. Yes. It's one thing for three months, but six months of the year, I think, uh, will make all of us out down here crazy. Uh, so thank you.
And we did, when we did, Eliza and I met initially with Sea Streak over the winter. We did talk with them about concerns about, um, the number of people coming at a time. The boats being not remaining at dock.
Yeah.
Time that they're here, you know, we carried, we carried forward all of those things that, that we heard. Um.
Great, thank you.
You and others around the village about balancing the benefit and the, and the, the impacts of the boats.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it got better last year in those days where they parked, uh, they docked over, uh, West Point. Um, you know, we didn't have the boat going with the motors for six hours or four hours. Uh, and people could enjoy the waterfront. I mean, I remember there was a wedding and. I felt horrible for the bride because the background was the Sea Streak boat rather than the background she wanted. So. You know, it really hampers the enjoyment of the waterfront to have the boat dock here plus the noise and then clearly having all those people at once. So. Um, thank you for, uh, staying committed to the transparency and recognizing that there's people here. Uh. So, thank you.
Sure, no, no problem. And, uh, we'll, when we know more, we'll get back. That, that particular concern about the boats parking. And staying at the dock was definitely a focus of conversation. Um, and that is why, that's what we're waiting to hear back from them on is. How, what their parking capacity is in other locations. They were contemplating other routes, um, for the summer and fall. So we need to get an update on all of it. Eliza, is there anything that you want to add from that?
No, I, I mean, I think we just need the proposal and then we can discuss it with the community. But we, as Catherine said, we, we definitely shared the concerns that we were hearing from you and others, um, in the community. With them so that they could understand what kinds of proposals we would be really not interested in.
Oh, and.
Thank you.
Also note that we, we will be doing, no, once we have something to respond to and. Figure things out, we will a hundred percent be doing a public meeting on. On the Sea Streak proposal, I assume, right? So there was, there will be full transparency.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate, uh, the change in the way which this is being dealt with. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming on.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Meyer, anything from you or anyone else in the public? Well, thank you for joining us tonight, sir. Good to see you. Thank you, Julian. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn if there is no other?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Right on. Jeff, well done running the new tech.
Rose watched. Was watching everybody. Aren't you watching it?
My cat was here too.
Bye.
The cat on and take me off.
Good night.
Welcome Laura, look forward to working with you.
Likewise, Catherine. Take care.